I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council from City of Campbell Tuesday, May 7, 2024. Roll call please.
Councilmember Bybee?
Present.
Councilmember Fratato?
Here.
Councilmember Sazola?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Here.
Here. I'm gonna move the special presentations and proclamations out of order a little bit so that... Huh? Well, I know we're gonna do the pledge first, but I'm moving the special proclamation so that I can have Kristen up there once and Andrea and not have to keep coming back and forth. So will you come forward and lead us in the pledge first?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of it who worship justice, all creation, under God, in principle, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to give Kristen a certificate for which she typed up herself, I think, for leaving the pledge. And then I would also like to proclaim that the week of May 5 through 11th is Municipal Clerks Week. This week is the time to celebrate and reflect on the importance of the municipal city's clerk's office and to increase public awareness of municipal clerks serving in their communities. And I'm going to present Kristen and Andrea Sanders. The proclamation, uh, we, uh, can't speak again. Municipal Clerks Week for the City of Campbell. Okay, and we got, we got the camera ready. All right. Thank you, ladies. And then now I would like to congratulate our city clerk Andrea Sanders for her 2024 CCAC Award of Distinction in Organization, Administration, and Communications. And I would like to present you, where's our photographer? So I have a certificate here for Andrea for her wonderful work. And would you like to say something?
I just wanted to, excuse me, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the recognition. This truly is a labor of love. I get up every morning. I love what I do. I know it sounds silly. It's not, it's not a glamorous job, but it's important to me. It's one that I take very, very seriously. And I get great satisfaction from, from working with such wonderful people. Having Kristen in the, in the clerk's office has been such a wonderful addition, and she's been such a help to our office. I love my Campbell family, and there isn't anything that I'd rather be doing or anywhere that I'd rather be doing it. So thank you very much.
And I would like to ask my fellow council members if they would like to speak.
I'll begin, and I just wanna congratulate you, Andrea, on your award. I know that being a foreign member of the Clerks Association, it's an award that isn't given out lightly. It is, there's a lot of competition for it. It's awarded to a clerk throughout the state of California, so there's a lot of competition for it. And I also want to congratulate the both of you for Municipal Clerks Week and let the audience know that the municipal clerk is the oldest public servant and is really the go-to position in most cities, probably all cities, where people really don't know how to, how to navigate the system or how to navigate a city, and they usually end up at the clerk's office. And I know that the two of you always provide wonderful customer service, so thank you very much.
It's the oldest position, right? We're not saying Andrea is the oldest. No, it's just as, as I listened to, to your comments, Andrea, I just was really reflecting on how much you continue to embody the values of Campbell and our community. You know, and I know from, from working with you and, and when you're going for this role, how important that is to you, and you talking about your plans, you know, part of the association and continue to get your training and, and just, you know, I know you're going to conferences and really just staying up to date on the latest, and, and it is, you know, at, at the same time, that's this very, you know, very longstanding position. The, we, we, we're just hearing about how the technology is changing and the requests are changing and the demands and applications from, from the public. And so just the fact that you're able to balance that and, and Kristen as well with the, just the way you embody those values and serve the public, it just gives me a lot of joy to, to see that reflected and you recognized for that, so thank you.
Let me also add my congratulations to both Andrea and Kristen, and thank you very much. So much of your job is done behind the scenes and very few people really see the work that you do, but it is so essential to the proper functioning of the city and for the benefit of the community. So thank you and best wishes for continued success.
And a personal thanks for every time I get confused. What is this FPC, PC filing? Oh, God, help me, please. And I mean, everyone says already, but you're the best.
Okay, I'm gonna try not to cry. Uh, you've been here since I've been here. You were actually here before I got here, and I've watched you grow into your position. And I'm just so glad that you got this job. It's, you've done a great job, and I've, I mean, I just really have seen you blossom and grow and that you now have the support that you needed. That was very important for us when you got promoted, that you did get the support you needed. And I do see that that is your right hand. Is she left-handed? Oh, right hand. I was gonna say left-hand woman instead of right-hand man, but you're right. Okay, so great, and thank you very much for all that you do. Okay, the next one out of order is for Gary, and I would like to acknowledge National Police Week and Police Officers Memorial Day, which pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty and the safety and protection of others. So I am proclaiming that May 15, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 12 through the 18th of 2024 as Police, National Police Week. And I want to present you, Gary, with a proclamation.
Presenting you, ooh, wow. I'm presenting you with this proclamation to both of you here. And as members of the Campbell Police Department, you strive every day to safeguard the freedoms and protect the lives and properties of the citizens of Campbell, whereas the Campbell Police Department provides outstanding police services to the community, whereas 55 law enforcement officers throughout the nation have lost their lives in the service of their communities in 2024, and whereas the City of Campbell asks all community members to join in honoring the police officers past and present who have played an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which are guaranteed by the Constitution and protecting the lives and property of Campbell residents. Now, therefore, I, as Mayor Susan Landry of the City of Campbell, do hereby recognize the week of May 12 through 18th as National Police Week and observe May 15th as National Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those who have lost their lives in service for their community and direct the water tower to be lit in blue in honor of this National Peace Officers Memorial Day. And you guys are really getting me crying here tonight.
Just wanted to thank you, Mayor Landry, and the rest of the city council. Feel very privileged to work in a community like this with the support of, of our council. I think this proclamation says a lot to the women and men of our police department that they have the support of the city council, that they have the support of our community. It's, uh, it's near and dear to our heart, that partnership that we have and that the service that we provide. So I appreciate your ongoing support for our entire department and thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you both. Okay, last but not least, I would like to proclaim May 2024 as National Cities, Town, and Villages Month in recognition of the importance of local government services. Celebrating their 100th anniversary, this proclamation is part of a national effort led by the National League of Cities. In appreciation of Campbell's support, the National League of Cities will include our name in their national press release on May 22, 2024 and recog- and recognized on NLC100.org. And I'm going to present this to our council member, Dan Fratato. Where's our photographer? All right, oh, we got Brian here. Thank you. All right, do you wanna have a word, Dan?
I'll have a great word. I thank you very much. I'm pleased to accept this particular proclamation from the National League of Cities. I had the privilege of serving on the Board of Directors of the National League of Cities for two years, and fortunately also served on the Board of League of California Cities. And I have come to realize the importance of both state and national organizations in advocating for cities. We at the local level have the greatest responsibility to the public because we're right there and we can make things happen by delivering services to the public. We can pave roads, create parks, and create a healthy and safe environment for our residents. And I think it's so important that this be advocated for at the state and national level. And likewise, the ability to, to communicate with members of Congress as well as members of our California State Legislature is extremely important in advocating or opposing various bills that are gonna hurt us at the local level. So I thank you very much for this recognition.
Thank you.
For all of us, not just me, I'm just the recipient on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, great. I'm gonna move on to communications and petitions, which there are none. The next item is oral requests. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on a man or not on the agenda. If you wish to address the council, it would be nice if you would fill out a speaker card, although you're not required, and you are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. And I do have an oral request here for Yulka Agarwal. Oh, oh, I did that terrible job. Will you please come up to the podium and hit the circle and make it turn red? Red flashing, that little circle thing.
There we go. Better?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. So I state my name and address? Oh.
Too good if you...
Okay. Well, good evening, council members. My name is Yulka Agarwal, and I'm a Campbell resident. And I'm speaking today to express my interest in serving on the advisory board or being considered for the advisory board for our climate action plan. I grew up in San Jose, though many of my adolescent years were spent here in Campbell buying cassette tapes at Rasputin's. And my husband and I moved to Campbell a year and a half ago, and we feel at home here. That's why I'd like to contribute to our climate action plan, so future generations are able to enjoy this quaint and friendly city, just as we do. I will bring a unique perspective to our Climate Action Advisory Board. I'm a practicing physician and psychiatrist for over 15 years, so I have firsthand knowledge of the impact environmental sustainability has on our physical and mental health, well-being, and social justice. At Cal State University East Bay, where I work, I've put this knowledge into practice and created a program that promotes environmental sustainability across our campus. As a first-generation Indian-American, I will bring a much-needed perspective to our advisory board. Indians are part of the nearly 24% of Asians who reside here in Campbell, yet we're consistently underrepresented in Campbell's municipal positions, commissions, committees, and boards. I also work part-time, so I'm able to dedicate as much time as needed to the climate action plan, both in person and remotely. So I look forward to the opportunity to apply my knowledge and experience to our climate action plan and the advisory board and help the City of Campbell ensure a sustainable world for future generations. Thank you for your time, and thank you to each of you for your service towards the city.
And thank you very much, and you've provided us with your phone number, email, and address, and I'm allowed to give this to staff, correct?
Please.
Okay, just checking. Thank you for speaking.
And go East Bay.
Do we have anybody online who wishes to speak? Do you have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak under oral requests? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to our council here, and I'm going to be making council announcements. We're gonna repeat what I said earlier. In recognition of Professional Municipal Clerks Week, I would like to take the opportunity to recognize our city clerk Andrea Sanders and our deputy city clerk Kristen Polite for the hard work that they do. Professional Municipal Clerks Week is a time to celebrate and reflect on the importance that they provide for local government and the community, and our meetings will not be very productive without you, Andrea, so thank you. Be sure to visit the 46th Annual Boogie Music Festival in downtown Campbell this weekend, Saturday, May 18th and Saturday, May 19th. There will be four stages of live music from all genres for the best local bands. There will be a Kid Zone with activities, arts and crafts booths, and a variety of great food, beer, and wine. For more information, please visit campbellchamber.net. I said this weekend, it's actually next weekend. Next, volunteers are needed to help pick up litter, join in the fun, and help clean up around your local Santa Clara County waterways. Register today for the National River Cleanup Day on Saturday, May 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at CleanACreek.org. Join the Campbell Veterans Memorial Foundation in honoring the men and women who have died while serving for the United States military. The event is on May 27th from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the Orchard City Green located on the other side of City Hall. City offices will be closed on Monday, May 27th in observance of Memorial Day. Police and emergency services will remain open. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Is there any council member, staff, or members of the public who would like to pull an item off consent?
I, I don't wanna pull an item, but I just wanna highlight item 11, which is a resolution commending Police Sergeant Victor Quintero for 17 years of service and presumably we'll invite him to a meeting and present his resolution, but I wanted to highlight his service to our city.
Yes, and thank you. And I would also like to commend Sergeant Victor Quintero for his 17 years of service. And yes, we were gonna have him back and have him lead the pledge and give him a certificate. So with that said, nobody in the public, okay, so I will take a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar, items five through 11.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Fratato?
Aye.
Councilmember Sazola?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Aye. That resolution for that motion passes. Great. Next is public hearings and introduction of ordinances. Item 12 is a public hearing to consider the request from Richard G. on behalf of Robson's Home to allow the construction of a residential planned development community, development, I'm sorry, not community, including 25 townhomes with 12 junior ADUs and one 10-unit apartment building, creation of 26 private lots and seven common lots, a total of 33 new lots, with use of a 35% density bonus of 10 units, and waivers from the zoning code and East Campbell Avenue master plan, removal of five trees located in the properties of 57 to 101 Gilman Avenue and 60 Dillon Avenue. The application under consideration includes a planned development permit, density bonus request, tentative subdivision map, and a tree removal permit, all submitted under SB 330 as a preliminary application filed in compliance with Government Code 65941.1 and file number PON 20232, or 1-25. And is there anybody on the council that needs to make any disclosures? I got up and shook Mark's hand before I got here and said, I'm disclosing that. And we have Daniel Farmer, our presenter.
Good evening. Thank you. So before you is an application for a planned development permit with a density bonus request, a tentative subdivision map, and a tree removal permit for properties located at 7 to 101 Gilman Avenue and 60 Dillon Avenue. So this is a six-parcels assemblage, approximately one and a half acres, principally located on Gilman Avenue, with one parcel located on Dillon. It is owned, planned, and developed, and at the time of its middle was designated under the prior general plan as central commercial. A component of that was within the East Campbell Avenue master plan, as well as the formal South of Campbell Avenue plan under the Commercial Medium Density Residential Designation. It consists of current commercial industrial uses and two vacant single-family homes that would all be demolished as part of the project. So the project does have several components. The principal entitlement is the planned development permit, and that would allow for construction of 25 townhomes, 12 of which would have junior accessory dwelling units within them, as well as a 10-unit apartment building. There's an associated density bonus request that would allow a 35% density bonus that allows for the creation of 10 additional units beyond what otherwise would be allowed by the general plan, as well as three waivers, development standards, as allowed by density bonus law, to park stall dimensions, building height, and the rear setback of the East Campbell Avenue master plan. Then there is a tentative subdivision map that would allow for creation of the private lots, the townhomes, and the apartment building, as well as common lots where you would have common driveways, landscaping, parking, and similar types of common improvements. And then lastly, a tree removal permit to remove five trees from the property, four of which are protected. So a quick background, as the council's aware, state law has a mechanism that's commonly known as an SB 330 pre-app. This allows developers to lock in standards in effect of time the pre-app is submitted. So this application is subject to a pre-application that was accepted in March of last year that did predate the city council's adoption of the current 2040 general plan, revised municipal code, as well as the multifamily development design standards, the MFDDS. So none of those standards apply to this application. And such, it was also reviewed under, again, the prior South of Campbell Avenue area plan that since was rescinded by the council last year. I just, by the way, a quick comparison, under the new general plan, minimally, this project site would require creation of 51 units. In comparison to the application's 47 units, that's inclusive of the 35 primary units and 12 JADUs. So the additional unit count was provided following a planning commission study session held last year. In terms of site layouts, here we see the configuration of the project. Along Gilman Avenue, you do have the townhome buildings that would face along Gilman, as well as small duet units located behind within the interior roadway, and those would face inward towards the private roadway. And then along Dillon would be a square-shaped apartment building with a small parking lot located behind it. The site is surrounded by the pending Crestley Homes Parkview mixed-use development. In terms of design, the townhome buildings come in two flavors. You do have the units that face directly at the street, that's Building 1A, elevations on the left, and then the interior units, those are shown on the right. Both buildings are about 42 feet in height, three stories tall, incorporate comp roof as a primary roofing material, standing seam metal as an accent, and vertical siding, stucco walls. And then the apartment building facing Dillon Avenue is taller, that's 47 feet, that's four stories tall, the top level's a mezzanine, and then incorporates standing seam metal as a primary roofing material, and also similar vertical siding and stucco walls as the townhomes. And then the tree removal permit shows the protected trees that would possibly be removed. As you can see from that diagram in the bottom right, these trees are functionally in the way of the proposed buildings and private roadway. In terms of density bonus and low-market rate units of the project's affordable housing components, so the applicant is proposing two very low apartment units, one very low townhome unit, and one moderate townhome unit. So provision of these four units does satisfy the city's local 15% inclusion requirement, which requires four low-market rate units to be provided. Three of these units, the very lows, also constitute the target units under state density bonus law, and that allows a density bonus up to 38.75%, shown per the table under state law. The applicant, however, is only proposing a 35% bonus, so this is a little bit less dense than it otherwise could be. Then in terms of review considerations, this is a housing development project that is strictly regulated by the Housing Prices Act and the Housing Accountability Act. It's largely limited the city's ability to review it against consistency with objective standards in effect of time. At the time this application was accepted, there are limited standards in both the SOCA plan and East Campbell Avenue plan, as well as virtually no standards in the former PD zone. However, it does need to comply with the general plan, and it does. It is consistent with the designations that applied to the property at the time of its middle, as discussing your staff. And then in terms of secret review, the applicant did pay for a consultant-prepared initial study that resulted in preparation of a indicative negative declaration that incorporated standard mitigation measures for air quality, greenhouse gas, cultural reality soils, hazardous materials, and noise. These are largely best-practice measures. Additionally, this application is also subject to review by the Water Quality Control Board through a corrective action plan. That plan recommended the applicant do soil sampling, which the applicant did conduct, which found that there were not VOCs that were above screening levels for residential use. Additionally, the corrective action plan will require excavation of soil after demolition. after demolition, the buildings, the roofs, metals, and insecticide from the ground. And following that work, the water board would issue a letter of no further action that the city would be requiring to see prior to issuance of a building permit. Uh, therefore, the planning commission does recommend that the city council introduce an ordinance adopting the MMD and approving a planned development permit, as well as adopt a resolution approving the tentative vested subdivision map and a tree removal permit. With that, I'll take any questions to Councilman.
Uh, any questions from council? I don't see any. I'm gonna ask a question that, just so the public understands, what's the difference between a JADU and an ADU?
So a JADU is limited in size, so it cannot be larger than five hundred square feet. It does not need a full kitchen, it can have something more akin to a kitchenette, and it also can share the bathroom with the main house. Now, in this particular case, they are not proposing to do that, so it does have its own restroom, functionally its own, uh, kitchen. So while this is a JADU, it does feel more like an ADU.
And are there, uh, deed restrictions on these like we do about no short-term rentals?
Uh, no longer with no short-term rentals because that's been clarified as being banned citywide. However, as a JADU, it is limited to an owner occupancy requirement, so the owner would need to live in either the main house or the JADU.
Okay, great, and on your tree chart that you had, our alliantis counts as a protected tree?
So outside of single-family residential, we protect all trees with a couple of exceptions that are larger than twelve inches in diameter.
Okay, because that one's, that one's like one of the worst trees you could plant. We need to change our description then. Okay, uh, those were my questions, uh, is there, um, I'm gonna open it up to the public and I invite the applicant to come speak first, and you have five minutes if you need it.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor Landry and councilmembers, my name is Richard Yee, I'm a project manager for Robson Homes. Excited to share our project with you tonight, which represents a successful collaborative effort with the planning commission and staff. We're able to increase our initial residential unit count from twenty-nine to forty-seven using density bonus, the addition of JADUs and a ten-unit apartment building. As noted in staff report, our project requires concessions. The first slide is a street, streetscape view of the three-story townhomes along Gilman. And these are photos of similar Robson projects in Campbell, including our townhome apartment project down the street. Our project will have the same design quality, craftsmanship, and detailing that you see. This is aerial of our six parcel assemblage. And photos of the existing neighborhood. So our ten-unit apartment building is on Dillon Avenue, assigned tenant parking is in every area. Duet, townhomes are in the middle, and the five-unit townhomes are along Gilman Avenue. Main driveway on Gilman Avenue provides access to the apartment parking area and the townhome garages. Secondary driveway is for exiting only. Our front doors along Gilman and Dillon face the public street. So this visual, physical connection is pedestrian-friendly and ties the new community to their neighbors. We have six, oh, sorry, we have sixty-four onsite parking spaces. So although parking is not required, there are two covered parking spaces per townhome unit, six townhome guest parking stalls, and eight assigned spaces for the apartment building. This parking count does not include five additional street parking spaces on Gilman and Dillon created by elimination of existing curb cuts. We are providing diverse and affordable housing options, two, three, and four-bedroom townhomes, studio one and two-bedroom apartment units, and junior accessory dwelling units that can provide a source of income as legally rentable units to subsidize homeowners mortgage payments. And ADUs are recognized by the state as affordable housing. Here's a close-up of our five-unit townhomes. Our interior duet townhomes. And the apartment building. So we are continuing to refine our exterior elevations, building elevations, uh, similar to our project down the street. We will work with staff on these refinements, which your city code allows to be administratively approved by the community development director. In closing, our project will complement the character of the existing neighborhood. The design and use of high-quality materials will look and feel like our residential project down the street, which is character defining for the urgent residential neighborhood. We appreciate your consideration of our project tonight, and we respectfully ask for it.
Thank you. Is there any else from buddy from the public that would like to speak on this project? I don't see any, and do you have any closing comments that you'd like to make? That's it, you're good, okay, thank you. And, uh, Daniel, I forgot to ask you a question. So I close the public hearing. There's a two-and-a-half-foot setback on the back of the ones on Gilman?
Yes.
How high is Cressley Homes, and I thought that was a zero lot line with no windows?
Uh, on the other side with the Cressley project, it's two levels of parking, about three feet on its interior side. And then on the podium deck, the units are basically tucked back behind. So there's, from the future residents' perspective, there will be some distance from this project.
So you have two and a half feet on this side, and you'll have four or five feet on, four, he's raising his hand.
Project.
Four, four on the, okay.
But then the actual living level of the units will be raised up atop of the parking podium deck and then set behind a walkway at his.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, uh, bring it back for council discussion or motion. Sergio.
I just want to make some brief comments, I haven't had any, um, uh, contact with the project team, but I was very impressed with the quality of the project, um, I do agree. Um, it's, it's, it's both in keeping, but I think will really be an improvement to the neighborhood as that area emerges. Um, and just personally, um, I'm, I'm in interested and intrigued by the concept of, um, using ADUs to kind of subsidize, uh, maybe affordability for, for homeowners in some ways. And so, um, I just, you know, just kind of a note to staff to maybe track that as we're developing other strategies to encourage different forms of affordability, I, I, I just found that interesting, but, uh, 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 otherwise supportive of, of the, uh, recommendation.
Uh, and I'm just gonna add, every time I see the Robson project, I'm always completely impressed. Uh, you guys do such a great job, and the amount of detailing and down to the little finial whatever, you guys go to that level of providing a quality product, I mean, it looks great. It's gonna be a major enhancement to the street as you look across from the park. And the fact that you're providing so many units, especially in the, the very low income category, I think that's actually wonderful. So I do appreciate all the hard work that you guys do. Make a motion. Sergio.
Um, sure, I'd be happy to make a motion, just, uh, just go back to the right. Thank you for that, uh, cheeky, Mayor Landry, uh, so I move that the, uh, city council will introduce an ordinance adopting a mitigated, mitigated negative declaration, approving a planned development permit with a density bonus request, and adopt a resolution approving tentative vesting subdivision map and a tree removal permit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Aye.
It has to happen at least once.
I like it, you're excited. Councilmember Fertado?
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Wholehearted yes, thank you very much, that was pretty good, Dan. All right, thank you, that motion passes unanimously, thank you guys.
Uh, being an ordinance of the city council of the city of Campbell, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and approving a planned development permit with a density bonus to allow construction of a residential planned development, including twenty-five townhomes with twelve junior accessory dwelling units and one ten-unit apartment building, use of a thirty-five percent density bonus, ten additional units, and waivers from the zoning code and East Campbell Avenue Master Plan for property located at fifty-seven through one oh-one Gilman Avenue and sixty-seven Dillon Avenue, file number PLN twenty twenty-three dash one two five.
Further reading be waived.
One second. Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado?
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye, thank you, that motion passes also. All right, next we're gonna move to number thirteen, Assembly Bill four eighty-one, Military Equipment and Annual Report. And we have our officer, I totally forgot your last name.
Captain.
Captain now, oh god, man, I'm really, okay, sorry, captain. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Tonight, my presentation is gonna go over Assembly Bill four eighty-one. In twenty twenty-one, Governor Newsom signed it into law, stating that the public has a right to know and participate in decision-making processes related to the funding, acquisition, or use of military equipment by state or local government officials. This was done in an effort to increase transparency, accountability, and oversight in addition to providing safeguards to protect the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and liberties. The bill also created a public forum for input and engagement in addition to annual reporting and approval requirements for the continued use of the equipment. The equipment is needed to help provide a safer, peaceful resolution to the involved parties, the public and officers involved. The equipment most often affords us additional time to make decisions, provides greater distance from the potential threats, and cover for protection. This allows us to better evaluate the actions, capabilities, and intentions of the involved subject or subjects. In May twenty twenty-three, council approved the continued use of resources defined as military equipment in our possession. One ongoing requirement of AB forty-one is the police department must complete an annual report to include inventory, usage, future acquisitions, document internal audits, summarize community feedback, and identify the cost and funding source. The report attached to the council report is the annual report for twenty twenty-three, which covers the entire calendar year satisfying this requirement. On March of twenty, uh, excuse me, March twenty-seventh of this year, we had a, we held a community meeting, the chief and I, uh, to discuss this report, no one from the public showed up, and I believe that is a continued reflection on the trust the public gives us. One other requirement of AB forty-one is that the city council review and approve the use of military equipment annually with the following criteria. The military equipment is necessary because there is no reasonable alternative that can achieve the same objective of officer and civilian safety. If purchasing the equipment, the equipment is reasonably cost-effective compared to available alternatives that can achieve the same objective of officer and civilian safety. The proposed military equipment use policy will safeguard the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties. Based on the twenty twenty-three annual use report and the requirements set forth in AB forty-one and ordinance twenty-two eighty, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution funding that each type of military equipment identified on the twenty twenty-three military equipment annual report has complied with the standards set forth in ordinance twenty-two eighty and introduce an ordinance renewing City of Campbell ordinance twenty-two eighty for the requirements set forth in California Government Code Section seventy seventy. With the approval of staff's recommendation, the police department would continue to have access to the resources currently available. The current policies and procedures would remain in effect, and we would continue current, uh, the current tracking system to prepare for next year's report. Without the approval of the equipment or spec- uh, specific equipment designated by the council not to be used, we would cease the use immediately. This would cause us to have to redesign our policies, procedures, and operations for critical, uh, incident response, which should include our ability to provide and receive mutual aid. Public safety will negatively impact, be impacted, excuse me, and our less lethal options will be reduced. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, does council have any questions? Got off the hook pretty easy, no questions.
Thank you, I'll take it.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone from the public that would wish to speak on this item? Anybody online? I see none, so I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or motion.
Dan?
I would move the adoption of item thirteen on the agenda in compliance with Assembly Bill four eighty-one.
One second. Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado?
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye, that motion passes unanimously. Uh, next we're gonna move on.
That ordinance, oh man, that darn city clerk. Being, uh, an ordinance, city council, um, the Campbell, renewing the military equipment policy set forth, chapter eight point four four of the Campbell Municipal Code as adopted by Campbell Ordinance two two eight zero.
Move the further reading be waived.
Second. Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado? Councilmember Scazola? Vice Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye, great, thank you. All right, now we're gonna move on to new business, to item number fourteen, which is a downtown special event permit, uh, the Chamber Boogie Music Festival for twenty twenty-four, and I have Assistant City Man, Nutger Angelideta, who will be presenting.
Uh, good evening, mayor and, uh, council members. This is an application for downtown special event permit for the event this weekend, which you made in your announcements. Um, it's also an application for a fee waiver. Um, as you noted in the staff report, uh, they are eligible for a fee waiver, and our policy allows for a twenty-five percent waiver of the fee, which is comprised of, uh, the permit processing fees, as well as the costs associated with our public works department and our, uh, safety personnel from police department to, um, man the event. And, um, with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Uh, anybody have ca- questions from council? Dan?
The recommended action is to approve the fee waiver to the degree of city policy covering this.
Correct.
Thank you.
Dan, you have questions, so do you have questions? Um, can you just please clarify the difference in the requests?
There, oh, I'm sorry, sure.
You didn't say what we're asking.
I'm sorry, I apologize for that. The request by the chamber is actually for the city to, uh, not charge more than twenty-five thousand uh, for the fees associated with this event. The total cost to the city is approximately sixty-five thousand, which would be a, um, reduction of about forty grand, and the staff's recommendation is to stay with the city policy, which allows for a twenty-five percent reduction in the fees, which is about, uh, sixteen thousand five hundred, give or take.
So the, the city recommendation, or staff recommendation right now is, uh, for a total of forty-eight thousand, thank you, forty-eight thousand.
Correct.
Versus the twenty-five that they're asking, all right, okay, great, thank you. And, um, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? I see someone coming forward here who just got back from a game.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, and thank you to the city too. So, um, I feel like a kid has gotta come ask parents for an allowance adjustment. It's kind of where we are, but let me just kind of walk you through Boogie and what we had planned for the week after this. So first, I'm grateful for the relationship and the support we continue to get from the city council. And I do not take for granted anything you've given to us and provided for us in that relationship, I'm very grateful for that. And in return, the chamber has tried to be a dynamic partner for you and to support you in any way that we can, I think we've done a pretty good job with that as well. This is the forty-fifth annual Boogie Music Festival coming up this weekend. Just to kind of give you some numbers, we're estimating between thirty and forty thousand people to come downtown and spend money together. We are gonna support twenty-two local bands, we are going to have eighteen local community groups perform on the community stage. We have over one hundred artisans here, uh, thirty local businesses, and the big number for me is three hundred community volunteers who are coming and giving their time for the weekend to support the chamber, which is huge. Um, we did get some research from pre-sales at our last event, just so you know, eighty-six different cities purchased tickets to come to. Eighty-six different cities purchased tickets to come to. From, people from eighty-six different cities came to our festival, and including fifteen different states. We got that from pre-sale information last time. We have continually been voted one of the best local festivals by Metro, and I'm proud to say, uh, it would become a very family-friendly event. I remember meeting with Chief Carmichael early on and saying, we're gonna turn our events into a family-friendly event, and I think we've done a good job with that. So, um, since two thousand twenty, since COVID, costs have continued to rise, and since that time too, the city went to a full cost recovery. The truth is, that's what's hurting us, is to go to a full cost recovery, where we used to pay seventeen to eighteen thousand for a festival. Now, sixty-five is gonna not allow us to make any money at all, and what, all, with the financial disclosures we made to the city. Even if with the twenty-five percent reduction, we're gonna lose money. So, forecast would be my guess. So, we've tried to reduce costs, we've tried to do as much as we can. Boogie's not Oktoberfest, it's a different festival. It's not as profitable for us, um, and yet, it's, it's a, it's a great thing for the city of Campbell. So, um, I, I respect your position, whatever you have to do. If, if not, if twenty-five. What I would suggest, and if you can go higher than twenty-five and not grant us the twenty-five, that allows me to budget. With a set fee. If, if that's not something you were willing to do, then I would ask for an increase in the percentage for us. The actual cost last year at Boogie was, before the reduction, was, uh, forty, about fifty-four thousand. Was the actual cost. And, um.
Thank you, Ken.
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate it. Happy to answer any questions too.
Okay. So, anybody have questions?
I do have a question, Ken. I, I'm just wondering, um, with that. Volume of people who attended and the great participation by various vendors and so on, I, I don't understand why the chamber still loses money. I mean. Do you need to raise your rates for vendors and?
So, we have, we have done that, and, uh, so, where Oktoberfest is a heavy beer-drinking festival, obviously Oktoberfest is more of a family event. We don't have near the beer sales for October, for Boogie, that we do for, um, for Oktoberfest. So, we've tried to add, I've increased the cost to artisans. I've increased cost to vendors, to our vendors. The bands already take a significant discount, very grateful for their support. Uh, so we try to save money wherever we can, but. Um, it's just really difficult today to run a festival with a sixty-five thousand dollar bill. You can't, you can't do it. You know, and then if I know that's, that's an unintended consequence, I know that's not what you want, but that's reality, that's what's gonna happen, Ken. No, no, no organization that runs a festival like this is able to support that kind of thing. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm gonna repeat what I said last year and, um, support the staff recommendation. We do have a, a policy, a special event policy that allows for a certain amount of fee waiver. I realize that the, um, event is, um. Brings a lot of people to the community, and it is worthwhile, but we do have costs ourselves, and. If you were present, uh, a couple hours ago at our budget study session, you would realize that we are four million dollar, uh, in deficit trying to balance our budget this year, so. To me, every cent counts, and, um, unless we change the policy and have a dialogue about that, I'm not willing to support a greater fee waiver than what our policy, um, currently stands for.
Yeah, I'm in, uh, you know, the last time that this came up, I, I've felt different, differently, but, uh, you know, I, I really agree with, with Ann. The, no doubt, the, it is personally my favorite, uh, of the festivals that, that, that we, we, we have, and, uh, I, I know it's challenging. You know, because we, we've had dialogue and conversations with, which I appreciate, I understand that the challenge is, um. But we, you know, we, we created a policy which, which I supported, and at the same time, supported, um, exceptions to the policy last time that has come up. You know, understanding the impact to the community, um, but just the, the fact of the matter is, the way, the way I see it, we just don't, don't have the, the money right now. We, at, at the last budget adjustment that, that we had, um, we had a deficit, we have a deficit for this fiscal year, and. You, you, you know, unless we're, we're talking about other strategies, but, um. Possibly looking at deficits for, for, for future years, and, and I, I just don't see where the money comes from, and, you know, as, as. Uh, Mayor Landry put in the last discussion, you know, we have to kinda nickel and dime a little of every, really scrutinize every, uh, e- expense insurance, or doing that just to, to have this kind of. Um, cost that we hadn't planned for allocated, um, I, I just don't see where, where, where the money's, um, coming from, and so I, I hope that things will be. Different in, in the future, but, you know, I think the staff, uh, that the policy is already, uh, a subsidy, and so, you know, that, that's. Um, I think significant en- enough as it is, but, you know, I say that with complete appreciation both of the, the. Value of the festival, of the chamber, and, and, you know, appreciation for, for the partnership.
Um, yes, I have always, um, supported the chamber, and I know it's a valuable asset to our community. Um, we just had a very challenging budget, budget study session, uh, in terms of our funds, as was previously mentioned. And as a matter of fact, this next year, we're, um, considering a moratorium on, uh, on hiring freeze, I should say, which would involve twenty-six positions in the city. Um, that is quite a challenge, and I am concerned about, um. The ability to support a fee waiver that's beyond our city policy this time, contrary to previous times with this conference.
It is pretty crazy how the mood shifted between last year and this year, and it's really based on just the times and. Just, I, I don't think Ann said it best, I really do, uh, so, but one thing I, I would add is, uh. I, I'm not sure if this has been done already, but I'm sure it's been done actually, but. Like, I personally, and I, I don't know about you guys, but I'd like to have, like, a full list of, of the cost to the city. Uh, like, every little detail, and like, maybe we can work, you know, maybe there are some things to shave, you know, maybe we. I don't know, I just don't have, I, I'd like to have those answers. Are there things, are we really maxed out, like, there's nothing we can cut on the city? Level, you know, could, I'd like to have some little bit of compromise if possible, you know? Uh, I don't know if that's possible, though. That's, that's my main question, actually, more than a comment, but, but I, I unfortunately. Uh, have to agree with the comments that have already been said, that this year's a lot different than last year, um, and, um. But yeah, it would just be a deep, deep shame if, I, I want these events to continue, and everyone loves them. It would just be absolute shame if we didn't have it, so, uh, yeah.
So, let's see what Angelique would like to say.
If I may, yes, the costs have been reviewed, they're reviewed every year, um, and they depend on what's proposed in the application. Um, our Public Works Department takes a look at it, it's, it's the same footprint, uh, probably a little bit greater than the last two years than it's been previously. Um, and then there's a, a very involved meeting with our police department, and they really have tried to look at what's absolutely necessary. What we don't wanna do is get in the business of telling public safety what makes sense for an event of this size, and so we do. Defer to the chief and his team to make that determination, and let us know what he thinks is best for the health and safety.
Um. It's a wonderful event, uh, brings in a lot of people to Campbell, helps us with our sales tax and some revenue generation. And I don't know that I'll get supportive of this, but I was looking at a compromise between forty-six thousand and twenty-five thousand. And halfway in between would be a total of thirty-five thousand for the fee. Uh, I don't know that I have any support to go with my suggestion. Speak up if you wanna.
Well, yeah, I was looking for a little bit of compromise, like, I, I am really concerned about these budget waters that we're having, you know, but at the same time. Uh, I don't know, maybe it's too much of a shock to go from absolutely yes to no. So, maybe I, I'm wondering if anyone else is, 'cause I, I am kinda, I'm willing to do that, but I also, at the same time. Wanting to go the other direction, which is the, kinda the discussion that we just had right now, for the most part.
And I, I mean, we just had a huge budget discussion on how many millions we're short, and so it's, uh.
That's why it's hard.
I'm kinda like, oh, you know, do I really wanna offer this, but I'm trying to be fair, and so is that, and you support beyond, and.
Well, I think what's fair is the policy that we have in place, and, you know, we talked about nickel and diming our, our own budget, and a, a few hours ago, so.
True.
To deviate from what the staff's recommending, to me, I, I can't support that.
I, I can understand, uh, so I will entertain a motion at this point.
So, I'll make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution approving a downtown special event permit for the Campbell Chamber of Commerce Chamber, Chambers Boogie Music Festival. Two thousand twenty-four, and adopt a resol- resolution granting a waiver of city fees. Related to the Chambers Boogie Musical Festival two thousand twenty-four, consistent with the city's, um, uh, policy.
Give a second.
I'll second the motion.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Furtado?
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola?
Uh, reluctant, aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
No. That motion passes, and not, not unanimously, but it did pass as a motion. Thank you. All right, now, we get to move on to our council committee reports, and item number fifteen is approve appointments of the Civic Improvement Commission. Uh, so, uh, Dan and I were the interviewing committee, and we had four applicants for two positions. And I would very happily like to know, let you know, that our Georgia Patterson and Sofia Camiso are, are two selected, um, people. For the CIC. And comment, Dan?
No, I'm just, we had, uh, four very good applicants, um, but, uh, showed excitement, and we're just here, and so it was a different decision, but. Please to pick the nomination that we have, and, uh, like to, um. Move the nomination then of Sofia Camiso, as well as Georgia Patterson, uh, as the new appointees for the city.
Yeah, and we did have four very high-qualified, very enthusiastic people that applied. It was great to see that we had that many, 'cause sometimes we don't get any. So, it was great to see that we had a lot of, uh, interest in this. Uh, so at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public, and if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak. Come on up, if you'd like to state your name. The circle, push the little microphone.
Um, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, I just wanted to say how excited I am to be on the Civic Improvement Commission.
Why don't you state your name?
Sorry, I'm Sofia Camiso, um, and I'm really looking forward to collaborating with all the other members. Um, it's truly an honor, so, thank you.
Thank you, and I've seen someone else who wishes to speak.
Hello, good evening. My name is Georgia Patterson, um, and I also would like to express my gratitude and excitement for this opportunity. I am very passionate about the city and about, um, just bringing awareness to what the city has to, to offer to all of its residents, and so very excited to. Collaborate and, um, support wherever I can. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think it's great that you both showed up here for us to thank you in person, so thank you. Uh, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, we can make comments, I'm sorry. That's not on my notes here, comments, I shouldn't.
No, that's okay, I just wanted to, uh, it is really great to, um, see both of you, we, we don't always, um, get that, but, um. Really, you know, I'm obviously not on the committee that does interviews, and I was, as I was reading the applications. Um, I had no idea which two you, you were gonna go with, because, um, everyone seems so qualified, but, you know, absolutely thrilled, uh, that both of you in those positions. Um, I would say to, to the, to the others, and I think we, we communicate this anyway, but, uh, you know, if, if they're listening, or if we haven't reached out yet, I, I hope people will continue to stay involved. Uh, but I'm really grateful that, that we have, um, uh, uh, both of you, uh. Sofia, it's great to chat a little bit after the previous meeting, I appreciate that you stayed the, the whole time, um, but just really, uh, I, I admire your enthusiasm, and, and for both of you, really. We, 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 we need you, I mean, it, it's, it's not us doing you the, the, the favor, it's the other way around, and I hope you'll. Continue to look for chances to get involved and bring in your own networks, communities, and, and, and friends as, as well, and, uh, introduce them to this, so. And thank you for the, um, uh, committee for their work.
Anybody else have any comments? He's like, now, now I will entertain a motion. Ann will make a motion.
But yes, um, I would move the appointment of Sofia Camiso and Georgia Patterson to serve on Civic Improvement Commission.
And, uh, we'll just add here that it's, uh, two short terms, both expiring in August of twenty-six. That's part of motion.
That's fine, but you're allowed to obviously reapply for that point.
Yes, all right, let's.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Furtado?
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Wholehearted yes, okay, great, thank you very much. Yay, okay. All right, uh, now we can have our committee reports, uh, who would like to start? Elliot?
Uh, I've only got one thing. I attended Taste of Campbell fundraiser for our wonderful CERT people out there, uh, for those who don't know what they do, they're essentially. Uh, we actually have a, a really, uh, people know Campbell CERT, we actually have a really good reputation. Uh, they're ready for emergency response, any kind of natural disaster, uh, so hopefully we don't need them, but they are there, and they're prepared, and so it's a wonderful. Um, fundraiser, and, uh, why it's called Taste. It's because there was so much glorious food there to taste, and wine, beer, and a lot of other great things, honey, that you name it, it was, it was a smorgasbord. It was wonderful, and, uh, Ann was there too, so she might wanna comment somewhere on that.
Uh, yes, I have a few brief reports, uh, all relate to the environment and the underground, if you will, um, I serve on the, uh, solid waste. Board, as you know, this is, uh, the collection and recycling of, of garbage, as well as recycling. And unfortunately, we did not have a form at our last meeting, so we couldn't pass our budget, uh, but that will be, uh, rescheduled, but the main point is, um. That there are, continue to be a number of state rules and regulations, uh, for the disposal of, uh. Byproducts of, of living in this community and so on, and a number of state rules that take into environment a concern about, uh. About the, uh, environment and what goes into the ground and so on. So, um, the West Valley Collection and Recycling, um, company, who has been our company now, and has it's. Has already, prior to me serving on this board, uh, been approved for approval, uh, as the continuing provider of this service. They will continue with, and, uh, they really have only just barely begun, the public, uh, service outreach that they are required to do to notify the public of what the changes are. So, for example, we used to have two free pickups a year, we no longer will have those, but any resident on their own can have three free pickups. Uh, they just have to call and make those arrangements, um, and, uh, the, um. Uh, West Valley Collection Recycling, perhaps you all received a letter from them, I know that I did, as a resident of the city, of course, indicating, uh, this new policy, but there will be other policies about. What goes into what bin and so on, um, in compliance with California rules and regulations, which of course is more expensive. Which also means then that, uh, sadly, our, uh, recycling and disposal rates are gonna increase, uh, for each of the four cities that are affected. Uh, by this Joint Powers Authority Board, uh, based on the approval of the new contract. So, um, that will be coming. With respect to, uh, the West Valley Sanitation Board, uh, again, that is a very well-run organization, we just had the opportunity to review. Uh, with the executive director, not only their budget, but their accomplishments, they. Don't always exceed the state requirements in these areas, um, and, uh, the manager and staff have done a very good job, and, uh, so. We are in good hands with this particular, uh, Joint Powers Authority. And then finally, the third one, of the Clean Water Authority. We are probably going to change the name of that organization, because a lot of people do not understand what the Clean Water Authority is. Uh, because we have the Santa Clara Valley Water District, which, uh, is the provider of water, which we all own already. But then, um, that is sold to water companies, and our principal water company is, uh, the, uh, San Jose Water Company. There are other water companies that serve the area, and then finally, when you hear the term clean water, we, people don't know what that is. It's basically stormwater. The runoff from rain that goes into the storm drains, that goes into the creeks, that goes directly, uh, down the creeks into the ocean. So, we are probably gonna call it something like the Stormwater Drain Authority to make it very clear. because there is a need to raise those rates somewhat as well, because of additional rules and regulations and preventive measures, which are all good. They do cost money. For example, the storm drains, especially on construction areas and other areas, are lined in such a way to prevent certain pollutants and debris and so on from simply washing their way into the storm drains as well. So that is something other prices, that's my report, thank you.
Boy, those costs only go in one direction, don't they? It just, I'm hearing a common theme. A few things since our last meeting. I think, I think we all attended Celebrate Campbell, which obviously was a fantastic event, really. I know it seems like it was so long ago at this point, but, because we had that extra week. But really beautiful event and a great space, really enjoyed that. Another thing that seems like it was a while back, but we had our first meeting of the Campbell Legislative Subcommittee. And really thank you so much to our staff, Angelique and Jose for scheduling. That this was, we're trying to now get in the practice of, for our first meeting, hearing from our legislators. So it's always a really valuable opportunity, challenging the coordinated schedules, which is why I really appreciate all the effort. But we heard directly about bills that touch on a number of things that we've heard throughout the year that have been concerns. And, you know, obviously, state has ways to address some of the things that we care about in ways that go beyond our capacity as a city. So we'll be keeping a close eye on those as things develop. Also had a number of Air District and VTA committee and board meetings. And the main thing I'll highlight there, the common thread with the VTA meetings is really seeing the Bard Silicon Valley Project moving forward with the contracts and purchases of equipment, of train cars, of all these things. So definitely something that is very real. We also had a board workshop to look at, what I would characterize as more of a long-range view of how we're going to plan for things like transitioning away from the current light rail fleet, which is aging, we have to start planning for the contracts now. And so, and I'm trying to kind of make the rounds at some of these different, you know, groups that we're all a part of, to just try to be accessible and share information, City Association, West Valley Mayors and Managers. And so you may be hearing from me there, but I'm also always happy to answer questions, either from colleagues or the public, if there's any questions about VTA or Air District or any of the other ones. And finally, last, two days ago on Sunday, I had the pleasure of attending the opening of the Beer Garden for Bora le Baja, Mexican restaurant just off Winchester. They moved there in 2009 and really have been, it's a great, great food, obviously, and great drinks, but a really great restaurant and a kind of, you know, very efficient use of space. And they're just expanding and adding amenities to the outside, which I think will be a welcome addition, but really just fun festive day that happened to coincide with Cinco de Mayo. So I encourage folks to check it out if you're driving by Winchester and have some time, so appreciate the invitation. I think that's just about it.
Thank you. So I attended the legislative briefing with Vice Mayor Lopez, and I'm not sure if you mentioned, but we had representatives from Assemblymember Berman's office, as well as Senator Cortez's office in attendance at that meeting. I attended the, an art reception in Los Altos hosted by Congresswoman Anna Eshu to celebrate the high school students who participated in the National Art Exhibition Competition. And the artwork from all of the students was on display. And it just so happened that the student from Lee High School was the lucky winner of the competition. And her artwork will be on display in Washington DC in the Capitol for a year. And they, she gets a trip to Washington to meet the legislators. So it was, it was a pretty exciting event for her. And I attended Celebrate Campbell as well, and lots of good food and some wine, and also the Arbor Day Celebration last Friday.
Thank you. I also attended Anna Eshu's art competition, and I have to say, the artists were spectacular. I mean, it was high school students that you could have thought that was a bunch of adults. The art was just absolutely phenomenal, and it was great to see someone local in our area that actually won. I attended the Mayors and Managers Monthly Meeting with Brian, and we did have a speaker to speak about legislative bills and things like that, but it was so noisy, you could hardly hear what they were saying. But they gave us a handout of different bills to read that affect us. I attended the Library JPA, we approved the preliminary approval of the budget for the year. And I don't know how many of you know they're building a building next door to their office, that's called The Nest. And it's, we'll have meeting spaces, and they did a lot of work with environmental groups to make sure that it's a bird-friendly building design, that the glass is the right glass, that they had native California plants. And so they really embraced the fact that it backs up to the repairing corridor. They, but they were $2.5 million over budget. I attended the DCBA meeting, it's a monthly meeting. And topics for me are power washing of the sidewalks, Christmas tree lighting, parking lots. Let's see, what else do they, they give me a list of things to come back and ask staff about. I attended the Arbor Day event, I was, had the honor to be able to speak at the event. And got me thinking, the night before, they were planting 12 trees, and the night before, I thought, how many trees have I planted in my career being a landscape architect? And I threw some math out at the kids, and they actually did the math and came, helped me come up with the number. I came up with 3,810 trees in my 40-year career, so that was exciting to calculate that. And I challenged Todd to come up with his number, I think he's going to exceed mine. But, so Todd, that's a challenge for you. And I did go to Celebrate Campbell, that was absolutely wonderful event. Black Tie Affair, James Bond Casino Real Theme. And I made the joke that I haven't worn a long dress since '97 when I got married. So can I need the theme next year or something that I can wear my long dress again, okay? All right, I think that's it, and at that, oh, wait, all right.
I'm sorry, because I think I did this last time, or a couple meetings ago, too. But folks, this Friday, 8:00 PM, May 10th, Mavis Staples at the Heritage Theater. I like, I really can't believe that we're getting a living legend here at Campbell, there's still seats left. I'll be there in the front row, but really encourage folks, if anyone's interested, it's going to be a great show. And of course, so are all our other Heritage Theater events. So just really special to have that here in Campbell, Mavis Staples.
Mavis Staples. All right, are we done now? It looks like we're done, meeting adjourned.